Seven thirteen, we are back. Action resulted in non-public. The board accepted the nomination of Laura Massey as a K two teacher. She comes to us as a bachelor's plus fourteen, and that is for the one-year position. Board also met with one candidate for school district treasurer, and we are going to meet with the other one sometime towards the end of the month, and then get back to both. And we just discussed negotiations a little bit, but that was it. No actions there. Public comment?
None.
All right, seeing none, we're gonna keep moving on. Approval of the agenda. Are we taking a motion? Somebody say something? Okay. Motion to approve the agenda by Jeremy, second. Deb? Any additions or deletions? Just one correction on seven fifteen, the expend from building. Have you there? Thank you, Jeremy.
I read it over.
I did. Who brought it up?
I did.
Oh, Ed, sorry.
I did highlight it.
All right, so I have a motion and a second on the agenda. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? Carrie's. Approval of the minutes of the May fifth meeting? Take the motion to approve?
I move it.
What's that?
I make the motion.
Second.
Sorry.
Trying to be like Todd.
You go for it. You can do it, just get ahead of me, I'm fine with that. So I have a motion and a second by Jeremy. Any additions, deletions? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? Carrie's. Motion to approve the May fifth non-public minutes. Motion by Jeremy, I like it, here we go. I like these. Second? Second, anybody? Deb? Second by Deb. Any additions, deletions, anything there?
Fabulous job, Janet.
Yeah, they were good.
All right.
I didn't pass.
They were wonderful.
All right, motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? Carrie's. All right. I'm at seven fifteen, wow, I can, I'm right on schedule. Chairperson declares recess for the public hearing. So I'm gonna recess the meeting and open the public hearing to expend from the Building Maintenance Capital Reserve Fund. Mr. Sherwood? Which one's? This is for the paving?
I was gonna punt it to buildings and ground, but it is for the driveway sealing and crack repair and striping. So put it out to bid the beginning of May, and I don't know that anybody responded to our ad or anything on the website, but it was emailed out to a bunch of people, and we did get six estimates.
Okay.
And ranging in price from twelve thousand to eighty, up to twenty-two thousand. Yep. And so I did sit down with Jeremy and Ed earlier this afternoon, and go through and kind of compared the estimates. Basically, three kind of sifted to the top, so the ones that jumped through my hoops. So filled out my bid form, provided a copy of insurance, listed references, made mention of a timeline, which, you know, basically is we'll work with the school and it's gonna happen this summer, but, you know, that's kind of what we needed to hear. And then estimate itself, these are all for chew coat sealing.
Okay.
And it really, the top three were property innovations, Bryant paving, and then Sunday paving. And Bryant's out of Meredith, Sunday's out of Wolfboro, and property innovation, I wanna say is out of Londonderry.
Yeah, Londonderry, Hampstead.
So. Yeah, we're going through, and property innovation is the one that came in the lowest.
Really?
They actually included an amount to bring trucking gravel to shore up the shoulders. They had an additional amount, two hundred, for like extra cleaning. They said there was more sand on our lot the day they came to view it than they're normally used to blowing off. I'm like, well, quote doing it, because I don't know that we do anything different. I certainly haven't paid a bill. So we went through and generally threw out the high and the low, but in this case, it's something that we're probably gonna do again in three years, and six thousand dollars is, or five thousand's kind of a lot to walk away from.
On such a small number overall, so.
And, okay. So the recommendation from the committee and yourself is?
To go on property innovations.
Yep.
And that is twelve thousand eighty dollars?
Twelve thousand two hundred and eighty dollars and eight cents.
Two eighty-eight? And that, what did we have in the capital for that?
I wanna say I had thirteen something. Wait, that's the wrong package. I can't read my glasses, so I'm not entirely certain I can read this.
Yeah, thirteen, two sixty-one.
And we're in with what the CIP called for? We have the money available? Put it in there for it?
I will say contingent upon that, I wanna call the references and check them out and see if I can find any others that they didn't list, but.
Okay.
What was that number again, Heather?
For the amount?
Yeah.
Twelve thousand, two eighty, eighty.
Eighty, okay.
Thank you.
All right, so the recommendation of the committee and the administration is to go with property innovations, that was spelled? In the amount of twelve thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars and eighty cents for the driveway seal coating and striping. Any other comments, thoughts? Okay. I am going to... Close the public hearing, or do I need to leave it open legally for thirty minutes?
I will say officially, leave it open that way if someone's...
I don't think so, but we'll, we'll leave it open and go back into our meeting if somebody does show up within the next twenty-five minutes.
They can make a comment.
We can, well, we can just revert back into it.
I like that.
That way, we're within the legal realm of where we need to be. Okay. So the chairperson's gonna defer closing the public hearing. So consent agenda. So we need consent agenda. You said a lot of policies. The principal report, your enrollment, your middle school, high school, and capital reserve, and then your capital reserve itself, as well as fund balances. Anything in there that needs to be pulled out and discussed?
I just was very confused. I felt like there was a B D H, two of them in here. Am I wrong?
There was something in the back. Hold on, further on. I saw it at the end of the board packet, I think.
I was very confused, 'cause I read one, and then I started reading the other, and I was like, I feel like I've read this before.
Right.
Yes, one's at the...
There's an update to the policy in the back.
Yeah, 'cause they weren't the same.
Right.
So I was just confused which one.
Is one the current one, and one is a proposed change?
That you'll be voting on, that's right.
Yes.
So the first one was the old one?
Is currently active.
And then the second one was, okay. That was my only question.
Okay.
About those.
I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda. By Jeremy, second.
Sure.
Deb? Looking for somebody's hand to come up. All in favor? Aye. Opposed or abstaining? All right. Sixth grade graduation is Monday, the sixteenth. Last day for students is Tuesday, the seventeenth, and that is an early release day. The nine thirteen joint board meeting, which is Wednesday, the eighteenth, is gonna be postponed or moved, because that is actually the middle school graduation night. So that will be posted in further notice.
Did we come up with eighteen August?
That is for the S U thirteen joint board meeting. This is the nine thirteen one?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No problem. And then, when do you wanna have, Heather, our public hearing? So we'd have to post it as a meeting as well?
I was aiming for the eighteenth, just 'cause I thought we were already going to be meeting, but I'm fine with scheduling it whenever we reschedule.
So the eighteenth is no good for Sherry, we know that much.
Because that's graduation.
'Cause that's middle school graduation. Who actually brought to light that that was middle school graduation? Thank you. So...
I just don't want it to do, I don't wanna do it before the eighteenth.
Not before the eighteenth. So what is the Monday after? Is, or do you have a meeting that night, Mike?
I think I'm okay.
The twenty-third?
Usually Wednesdays are fine. It's the twenty-third.
With the following, Monday off or no?
Uh, sorry, I'm in July.
Oh.
You said Monday, right?
Yeah.
Monday's the twenty-third.
He's on the wrong calendar.
Yeah, as usual.
June twenty-third.
Forgot your glasses.
Do you have anything there? On the twenty-third? No, I'm okay that day.
You have a board member that will be gone?
We're not gonna be here.
You're...
I just thought of that.
You're gonna be gone?
The week of the twenty-third?
All right, so how about the, what's the end of the week, Thursday? What's that? Is that a...
The nineteenth?
Yeah.
Uh, that's a Tamworth meeting. If you, depends on what time you did it.
I'm not available till at least six.
Okay, so they're five-thirty.
What about Tuesday?
I could do that on a Monday.
Devin Kersh is on the seventeenth, which...
Well, I put the, so the public hearing is for the bathroom rental, and the due date for the estimates is the eighteenth at two. That's why I didn't wanna do it before that.
All right.
And I'm, oh no, I am back on the seventeenth, but on the sixteenth, I'm in Florida.
Thirtyth?
Could do the thirtieth, if that's okay. Do you, are you back in town?
Can't do the thirtieth.
We'll be back in town July seventh.
Okay.
Terry's not gonna make the first meeting anyways.
Right.
Could participate remotely?
We could do probably remotely, right?
Yeah, we have internet.
Yeah.
Okay. So then, can we go back to the?
The third?
Twenty-third?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third?
Yeah, I think that's funny.
Yeah.
Twenty-third? All right, twenty-third, it is. We could do that one even a little earlier if you wanted to.
That'd be great.
Five, five-thirty.
So this is a public hearing?
Thoughts?
I can do five.
Five, Ed?
Yeah, I'll figure it out.
Okay.
Yeah.
We can go later if we need to.
Yeah, it's fine.
Monday's just tonight, I can get here earlier, so.
Yeah, no, I'm good.
All right.
Five o'clock?
Five o'clock. And that'll be posted as a board meeting. And then...
It wouldn't be like a normal, it would just kinda be the...
No, it would just be for that purpose, and then if anything else were to come up in the meantime, we'll get it on the agenda. We'll also have the other interview in non-public that night as well. Perfect.
Gee, that was easy.
Scheduling is always crazy. All right, principal report.
Just give me one second, I'm just putting that on the school calendar.
Thank you.
One thing for your approval is you have a board policy about field trips when they go out of state. Our fifth and sixth grade class is intending to go, pending your approval, to Pine Point for their class trip next Monday. So just ask the board's approval, it's they...
Make a motion.
Pine Point. Yeah.
I have a motion by Ed, second?
Second.
By Jeremy, any discussion? I think Pine Point's happened for many years.
It is mean.
I do, I actually do have a question. When the students go on field trips, I'm assuming, how do I ask this? If they, if their parent is not a volunteer, they're to be on the bus, correct? And not in friends' car, okay.
It is the expectation. I would say there's been maybe one circumstance I could think of that was a special exception because of carsickness, that there was just no way that child...
No, yeah.
So that was a special exception, but other than that, yeah, it is expected that kids travel by bus.
Okay, I was just thinking more of a liability step. 'Cause I just saw something on that, and I was like, I wonder if our school allows kids to... So that I just wanted to make sure.
I remember back when my kids were here, when they did shopping for something at Christmas time, and I took five, four or five students, and I had to have the school district listed as insured under my auto policy in order to do that.
Well, I go one further, that students at Canopy Lake used to be able to go home with a...
Really?
A friend's parent. Yeah, so...
Yes.
It's good that we're talking about that.
Yes, I...
So in that case, like when we go to Storyland on Friday, that will be a situation which is no different than skiing. They get signed out, and they have a permission that they're going, like, you know, just like picking up at school, they get signed out, they have permission to be picked up by.
So that's a release, so basically, that's a dismissal.
It's a dismissal, and then they're done, they're no longer our responsibility and...
Has to be provided in advance, not the day.
No, we have the whole list, it's already printed, 'cause parents have completed. We did a Google form with all the information.
'Cause I remember when my kids did, like, Clem Plantation. I always prefer to drive, 'cause I hate, I won't sit on a bus. But my kids went on, you know, it was usually myself and another parent in a vehicle, so.
Yeah, and my experience is, it has been the day of that parents would say, oh, can so-and-so go with me, and... Yeah.
So...
So...
Yeah, I mean, we've been pretty solid with our...
Signed out, so that the liability is off of the district.
Yeah. I think that's good.
We have a whole spreadsheet of who's going where, what time we were... For Storyland, different topic, where you have a bus coming back at one, and so parents either sign up that their kids are coming back at one in regular dismissal, or they're staying there and being picked up at three. So they can be signed out at one as well. If we have parents that are chaperones, that wanna, you know, go hang, then they can, but we have different options, but everybody's being signed out either there or here when they are dismissed at three-thirty.
Okay.
But I'm asking for approval for the five-six to go to Pine Point.
Appreciate it. So I have a motion and a second for the Pine Point. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed or abstaining? Carrie's. Senior walkthrough?
Just letting you know, this will be the second year that the Kennett seniors will be doing their walkthrough. They're going to all their elementary schools and walking through the halls. There's a bus that will bring kids for all S U thirteen schools, so they'll hit Freedom first, and they'll go to Tamworth, and then they'll land here. Last year was our first year doing it, I think we did it really well, so we're trying to outdo ourselves this year. Finding pictures of the kids when they were here as students, and we had them all over the walls, and so Holly's been going through and finding yearbook pictures and things, so we have that just so they can kind of step through the halls and see what it was like. The kids will be out in the hallway cheering them on, and high fives, and all of that. And so they took some pictures out front last year in front of the horse, so we're just looking forward to it, so just so you know that that's happening, and it's a nice positive, which goes hand in hand with the fourth. We will have, it's the Kennett Scholarship Night, and there'll be four scholarships being passed out that night from our P T L to Madison students, so. Just great. Can't tell you the names.
That's right, 'cause they don't know yet either. Come in. So let's jump to the business administrator's report.
Can we ask questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, go ahead.
I just, it's more related to the middle school letter that we got, but it, I had a question that I thought maybe Heather could answer, 'cause it said K M S will begin welcoming incoming fifth grade students to their annual tours of the middle school, and I just wonder how that works for our sixth graders.
So our sixth graders are going on Wednesday.
So they're kind of looped in that same rotation with...
Yeah, our, our original schedule was for us to go on Friday, but we're going to Storyland, so we asked for an alternate date, so they're going on Wednesday. Yep, and we've already had the, people, people have come, they've talked to the students, we've had their ambassadors come, so we've had that whole transition schedules.
And they get to do the transition days in August too, right?
Yep.
Others, sorry. All right. Moving on to the business administrator's report.
Okay, I'll look quick, if you have questions, stop me. Revenues, I don't think there's anything new from prior month. We got appropriations from the town. I checked in with them, we're scheduled, and we're scheduled in the next year, which is lovely for me, you guys may not care so much. And then, I think Medicaid is sitting at four hundred and one dollars and seven cents, which is quite a bit below what I estimated, I only estimated two thousand dollars, so. It's, I am seriously weighing with Jen in the office if the amount of time it takes to enter in the sessions to claim Medicaid reimbursement is a good use of...
Anybody's time.
Anybody's time.
It's a significant amount of stuff.
And we are not the only district in the state asking that question.
So we're getting what, two thousand dollars, you said?
Um, that's what I estimated when I did revenue. Right now, we're sitting at four hundred and one dollars. So we might get six hundred, maybe something crazy will happen, we double, let's get eight hundred.
And this is something we just, we, I wanna say...
And they're changing the rules again, effective seven-one, so. I, I will, I'd be very honest with the board, I am exploring what it means to just not do this, because...
And their system is horrible, and the number of times that our staff have worked to put stuff in, and then it hasn't posted, and then have to go redo it, our spend time, 'cause it's spinning, I mean, it's, it's a constant headache, and it's that way for all of our staff, and I don't know what it's like at the S U level then, but...
Well, I know, I mean, not in this district, but there have been other districts that have come, you know, and sought approval to have additional time to enter sessions in, but the, the result of that, it doesn't cover the cost of their time to do it.
So what is, what, what does the Medicaid reimbursement cover? And so what is it, what is that for?
So O T is a great one.
Okay.
And, and here, the O T is not employed by the school, so it's actually the provider. The, the bill is, the school is billing for this provider. This is what's particularly changing seven-one, so now the provider needs the bill. I don't even know how that works. But, and in other districts actually employ their O T, so they, you have sessions, it's authorized by the doctors, 'cause that all goes out. I'm not sure if the case managers send that, or how those requests for approvals go home. But they come back, they're signed by the doctors, the sessions are provided, they're available, like a valid Medicaid activity. We don't know which students have Medicaid and which don't, so the therapist would theoretically enter that in for every student they hold a session for, 'cause we don't know. And then the ones that qualify, we get re, our biller, which is M S B, bills out, and we get reimbursed.
So we're talking, O T, here, O T is doing that, speech is doing that, and all of our pairs that are servicing I E P needs are entering that as well. And if you have a pair that's doing it, then they have to spend time with a certified professional, so whether that's the speech or O T, to then certify their time. So not only is it time to enter, but then it's meeting time to verify that.
And New Hampshire is the only state in the nation that has a thirty-day review requirement? Like, so I think that is the pair part, where you meet with a professional, and like every thirty days it has to be reviewed. And New Hampshire's the only one that does it, which is one of the reasons this has become such a, I don't know, bottleneck's the right word, but why it is not working. I mean, the funds are there for the federal government to support the schools, but the rules in place, and what New Hampshire has done with it, has made it so it's not effective.
Yeah, a lot of school districts are facing this. This changed when, boy, maybe five, six years ago, you did not need a physician to sign off, this could be done in-house, which was making things much simpler to be done, so meaning that the speech therapist, or the occupational therapist, or the school counselor could sign off on those services and be reimbursed. Now it needs to go through the physician's office, which was also another bottleneck, so there's a series of these. And this is not lack of training and support. My first year, we brought in M S B to do a full training for all our staffs, how to report, how to use the system, and each of the schools have been great about trying to provide additional trainings and supports. I mean, I, I can't...
They changed their system last year, and M S B provided at least one session here. It wasn't in person, but online, it's still not enough to make this...
So would it be unrealistic to ask maybe at our August meeting to bring back maybe the amount of hours it takes in the course of a year between all the people to do it, and, and the cost, and see if it's, if it's... I mean, if it's, obviously, it's not worth it, it's not worth it.
So, my only thing is, like, so we can't predict what we're gonna get paid?
I think we could, the rate, like the reimbursable rate's fairly predictable, but we don't know which kid qualifies, eligible for that.
So that's my thing, is like, right now, it's really low, but is there a possibility at some point that it could go up? That, that's my only...
I think it peaked during COVID when they had expanded Medicaid coverage, and when they rolled that back.
I agree.
That was the start of the decline, and then it's just gotten worse.
It's just gonna stay low.
I remember it being a more substantial amount of money that was reimbursed.
It was in the twenty thousand.
And I can speak even, like, years ago when I was here, and I had to a lot of time for my pairs to be, you know, if you've got a pair and they're working with just about every kid on your caseload, you've got twenty kids, you don't know who qualifies. So they've gotta enter all those kids, it's a lot of time, and so I would support what, and I'm nobody, I'm just an audience member, but I would support you guys, it, it sounds like it's a lot of work, and it would be worth it to see what results you're getting from that work.
I'm saying, it piqued my interest last year and this year, I've really kind of been looking at it, and I'm really just disappointed, not at the effort at the school levels, but just what we're seeing, and then the direction that the state is going, and then the changes that they're ready to roll out for seven-one. And I, I, I think it would be welcome to the pairs. I mean, I'm kind of speaking for Heather and Lisa, but to not have to do that and have their focus beyond the students, I think would be about a bit... Honestly, if the program actually worked, like it's supposed to, so you go, you're entered in and out saved, but it doesn't, so sometimes they're having to go back through and do it again and again, 'cause, oh, it didn't save, or this didn't happen, or, you know, so there's so many mistakes or flaws with that software, that it just requires so much extra work.
Yeah, it would be nice if it just dovetailed with a time sheet or whatever, so you're just filling out the one thing once.
So do, do we wanna just give the direction to move on past it, or do you wanna see?
Do we wait till seven-one to see what?
Well, I can bring back a report in August, I'll kind of, you know, I can get with Heather and just kind of...
Don't spend the four hundred dollars worth of billing on it.
No, and then there's gonna be a few more trainings on what Medicaid, what they're rolling out, and, and part of me feels like that's just gonna add one more hurdle to the really long gauntlet they're running right now.
So we could make a decision August?
Yeah.
Or any question? So is this gonna impact summer positions? Are they gonna have to do this paperwork too?
I assume they have to do it for E S Y, but... I would have to log into N A S S and like dig in to see what we reported for that. Just because we report it in July, and then we decide it's not worth it for the school year, that's not a problem, that is, that's a conscious choice by the school district.
Okay.
Is, is there any, by not doing this, will this affect us? Like, in a negative way, not reporting?
I mean, and it's, it's something that we could look at year to year. I mean, I, I think the biggest thing is when you build capacity of your staff who are used to this training, I mean, that's, that's the important piece. And we, we, just because we don't do it next year, but I mean, including that revenue is important for the, for us to project out.
I mean, I can go down a path, the bigger school districts have Medicaid billers on staff, so they're not entering into an M S B system, so it's different. Not, one of our districts are that big.
No.
And combining all in S U thirteen, we're not that big.
Yeah.
But there are some smaller districts that, it's not uncommon to have this conversation, and there are some smaller districts that, that don't, that just said enough. And I'm not one to step over, you know, a nickel.
No.
Throwing away good money.
But if we're spending ten thousand dollars a year to make four hundred dollars back, I'd rather put the ten thousand somewhere else.
I wanna find that point, and I, I think we're spending a lot more in, in dollars on...
Billable hours.
Billable hours than we're getting back from it.
And if we say we're stopping, it doesn't preclude us from them later on saying, oh, we're gonna do it again?
Recessions we didn't go. Is there a contract with M S B?
I will find out about that. They are, I've never signed one since I've started, so I will check with Lisa.
Yeah, I think, I don't think we have a contract.
I mean, they, they are reimbursed based on what we bill, so they're also making a lot less. They just, they keep a percentage of what we bill.
Some of the indirect costs that we manage.
More time you can give back to the kids is, seems worth it.
So, all right, what was I? Revenues? That was revenues.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Expenditures, I made a correction. I don't know what happened, where somehow a whole bunch of health insurance got encumbered on the head custodian, but I have since fixed that, which is the main reason why the fund balance, and the fund balance this month is a little bit higher than it was last month. We're at six seventy-seven, and for April, we're at six twenty-three.
Oh, okay. I like it when the fund balance goes up.
Yeah, unless I just find something else, but that's kind of where I'm hovering, it's kind of been floating through there for a while. So I'm not expecting much different.
So I'm not expecting much different, um, couple more weeks in the food service fund will close out and we'll see if Janet's right or if I'm right. I'm kind of holding firm at forty five and she was still kind of eyeing twenty five, so. I hope Janet's right.
I'm voting for Janet on this one, just hoping for Janet, I guess.
But I encumbered, you know, I put an exposure on here for the forty five, so if Janet's right, this will go up twenty thousand. Okay, that's fine.
So you're budgeting for the worst.
Yeah.
She's hoping for the best.
Yep, high hopes, low expectations.
I'll take that as well. Questions for Heather?
Gatsby seventy five, well, what I meant to bring this to you last meeting, I think I had it in time, I may not have. The actuary that does our our biennial Gatsby uh calculations reached out and asked if we wanted to do a roll forward report. He's finding that the um, the published rates, the estimated rates used to develop. The June thirtieth twenty twenty five disclosures was three point nine three and when they came up with the updated rates, it was five point two. So he said, some auditors are requiring that the districts redo it, cause it couldn't actually reduce your liability, basically if New Hampshire retirement goes completely bankrupt. This is what the district's on the hook for, to provide those pension benefits. I reached out to our accountant and he said, no, he was fine with the numbers we have, we're small, it's not gonna be a big change, you know, a material change in what we have. Um, the cost for the roll forward was a thousand four hundred and fifty dollars, which was more than half of what we pay them to do the whole two-year biennial report.
Right.
And it doesn't reset the timeline, we would still do the report again in summer twenty six, so my recommendation is no, we don't do it, but I wanted to bring it before the board. So if you have any questions?
Any questions?
Could you tell me what Gatsby stands for?
Governmental Governmental Accounting Standards Board. And they are up to a hundred and ten pronouncements of how we need to properly keep track of public funds.
Could you say that one more time?
Governmental Accounting Standards Board.
Wait, it's a government program and it's not easy to do? All right, Jeremy. Any questions there? Uh, interdistrict food service contract.
Yep, I have this here and we do this every year, we did it in June last year, but years prior, I guess we typically use it. Do it in November, December, but it just says what we will provide to the Freedom School District. And what they agreed to be, what we're responsible for, for their rented meals and what they're responsible for, um. And it's signed by the Madison School Board, so if we approve, I have not changed it, except for the years.
And and I think in the past, we did it probably in November, just because it was ensuring that. They weren't changing, or they had no plans to change, because our budget locks in January where theirs doesn't lock till a month later. So it was more making sure that they were still on board before we, cause we used, when we used to sell, um. The gym teacher services as well, and one year, they went, we had it all in our budget. We went went to our vote, went through our deliberative session, got to their annual meeting. And they, the board moved to reduce them by one day, which would negatively affect our budget. Ended up not pa- passing and then reverting back, but it said, wait, hold on, we already allocated, you know, put forward a budget. So.
So that we're down to adjust this for the interdistrict contract. Um, and they, I do put on their budget timeline that they need to notify by December first if they're going to withdraw, so. This is kind of a housekeeping item, it's the same as it has been.
Motion to approve the food service contract between Madison School District and the Freedom School District. Motion by Deb, second by Jeremy, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post or abstaining, Carrie. Fuel prices, we talked about this at the joint board meeting, about um giving the S A U authorization to. Um, lock in fuel pricing, because they give us basically twelve hour window to make that happen, and we have lost out in the past, so. Thought for concerns here.
I am hopeful to get close to this year, but.
Do we have an idea how much propane we're gonna need? If we're gonna have full year for the roof up there and oil versus?
I'm hoping that since it was fully installed in August and the propane is for the heat only, the A C is electric. Um, my three thousand, I forget what I came up with an estimate, really fifteen hundred gallons was off, it was about seventy four hundred gallons of propane. So I put that out with the totals, um, the fuel usage totals. And in contrast, our oil was down, even though the other two districts were up in gallons used for this winter.
Okay, how much, so our fuel, our oil was down, but propane was up, which was to be expected.
Right, and propane is less per gallon, so the oil wasn't down by the same amount of gallons, but the cost per gallon is more for oil, so it's a pretty close swap.
Okay. I will take a motion to approve the S A U to lock in when they see fit to our fuel budget. Motion by Ed, second by Deb, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? All right, um, federal grants update.
Mike mentioned this earlier, the S A U, we do have allocations for Title One and I D E A. This year Madison qualified for a REAP grant, it wasn't stellar, seven hundred and ninety five dollars, but I did go in and claim it. So that's available for any type activity as an E S E A grant, so Title One, Two or Four, that we currently receive. Um, our consolidated apps originally were due six one, they rolled that back to seven one. And they even rolled it back again unless we need funding in July. Um, Heather is probably, not probably, she is the most forward thinker in the district, so I will work with Heather, Madison's will get done first. Simply because we have plans on the horizon. I haven't seen the allocations for Title Two or Four, I'm still, uh, last call I was on, they were still hopeful they would come through.
I D A was pretty standard, if I remember correctly.
Do we need to accept that because of grant or does the board need to accept, not like, like a regular donation? Okay, all right, just checking to make sure. Thank you, so your money. Yes.
You wanna close the public hearing?
Um, yes, I can do that, so seeing there's no other comments to do with the public hearing, I'm gonna close the public hearing at seven fifty. Thank you. Um, any questions for the business administrator? And as promised, I'm gonna jump forward, cause I, the ladies are here from the Madison Corner Schoolhouse. Um, related to the memorandum of understanding, um, I'm gonna give the floor to. Leanne, um, so this this in in our packets here, Mike, you have it here. Um, part of the grant funding that they're looking for for the Madison Corner Schoolhouse. Requires memorandum of understanding between the school district and the committee. Um, and Leanne's doing a ton of legwork on grants. Yep, please, what you brought and then Mike has copies as well of.
Right, excellent, I added a.
A draft.
Page, sorry.
Okay, that's fine. So Leanne O'Hara.
Leanne O'Hara, hi guys. I was told to bring six guys, I knew there were gonna be more.
I was thinking backwards. Or are they together?
They're, they are together.
Yep, thank you.
There you are, all right, perfect, so, um, so we've been working on, where do I go?
Anywhere you want, say it right this way.
Um, we've been working uh pretty diligently on trying to assess grants and ways that we can better bolster some funding. To rehabilitate the corner schoolhouse out front. Um, we actually made an application uh through a letter of intention to the L chip program. Back in April and we were invited to formal grant round. Um, so we're kind of excited about that, they always say, don't, you know, don't count anything until it's done and wrapped up. Um, going through this though, it's a far beefier process, there's about thirty six fields we have to touch and fill in. I have a copy of if anybody really wants to bore themselves. Um, some of the documents that we need, we're so fortunate to live in such a close knit community where we can. Do a handshake and we can say, oh yeah, so and so is taking care of this. Um, unfortunately, when it comes to some of the bigger fish in the world, um, that's not adequate enough. Um, so there are some items attached to the packet that I've provided you is um. A property owner acknowledgement form, this is because. We are on, the school owns the schoolhouse and the property that it's on. We are handling it through the sponsorship of the historical society's five oh one C three to be able to receive those funds. Um, and we just need the acknowledgement through the property owner that the school is allowing us pretty much to go through with this process. So that is the form that L chip specifically requests to be filled out, the reason I've highlighted a portion of it is because this is input fields. That I have filled in with information that I have available, I'm looking for confirmation on how that should, or information on how that should be filled in. Doesn't necessarily need to be done, I guess, tonight, we do have a June eighteenth deadline that we're trying to meet. Um, and I'm trying to get it through, there's an option for us to send these in in drafts. So that we can have them revised, if there's something that's inadequate or they need additional documentation, it still allows us enough time to pivot. And get that documentation corrected. Um, I have till June tenth to do that and my goal is to try to submit by the end of the week, which I realize is a very short timeline for you guys. Um, so happy to try to chat about that if you feel it's necessary or if it's something that needs to be handled.
Mike, you've seen that?
Yes, I have.
Thoughts?
Uh, no, I think that makes good sense and in conjunction, um, I wrote uh an M O U for the for the board.
Thank you, sir.
And the corner schoolhouse committee to look at, because I know that's a missing piece and one of the recommendations that you need um to move forward. Uh, with the restoration project, so I uh handed that out as well, but I think um would, you know. Gets to the point of, just throw things at you, um, it gets to the um spirit of the uh the L chip piece that was the missing piece here.
Perfect, excellent, that's actually the second item on here, which was the managerial control, so I'm going to trust that this probably addresses that and.
And we can take some time uh to look at that or get, you know, if the, if any of the board members have any questions or wants to make any revisions to, I'm happy to, I'm not sensitive, so we can certainly.
Excellent, thank you, sir. Um, the other item that became, uh, has become apparent, what's what's kind of interesting in filling out these L chip grants and. Perhaps you guys have seen this as well, is that when it's, it's pick your own adventure, so once you confirm one field. It'll open up and generate a whole secondary field, and like I said, this is a pretty lengthy process. One of the items that I discovered this weekend that we will also need a copy of is the property and liability insurance to, for the school to submit to L chip. Is that something that is available for us?
Thank you.
Um, and then the final item that I was hoping to at least start the conversation with, and Nancy's here as well. Um, is with regard to the concept of stewardship, who is going to be stewarding, they want an idea of who's gonna be handling this property. Past the point of rehabilitation, um, who's going to put together a preventative maintenance, um, there is a. There are some guidelines and guidance for historical buildings and structures, how to perform, how to anticipate preventative maintenance. A ten year plan, a six month plan, things like that, and ultimately who would be in charge of that, is it a maintenance team? Is it the historical society, is it the preservation committee? So I didn't know if there had been any consideration in conversation about that, so that I may input that information into the application.
Has been? No, uh, the only thing we've talked about is it's a building and we need to preserve it, or the town request, so it's. And I think at the end of the day, because it is a school district property, I think we would be on, we would be responsible for the maintenance. Which I think has been, we've talked about at the at the deliberative sessions and and when we've talked about the, you know. The twenty five thousand dollars that we've put forward is to say, you know, and even last year about the, you know, destroy it or keep it.
Right.
And and if we keep it, we're we're on the hook to maintain it once we get to that point, so I think, I mean, I think the school district would ultimately be responsible.
Okay.
For that and I don't think we would discourage any involvement from the historical society and and people who know that type of. Building and or property um to to assist with that, but I think we, at the end of the day, the dollars and cents. Are gonna come from the school district to make that continuation happen, in my opinion.
I agree, as long as it resides on school property, right?
Okay. Did I hit everything, Nancy?
I think so.
Anybody have any questions for me?
I actually have a question, um, we talked about this the last time, but what it, is there? Is there like sewer and running water?
Yes, there is. It goes, it goes right under the driveway, there's actually a sewer cap in the middle of the driveway, so we went, I think I asked Heather this at one point and she pulled the maps out. There is a separate septic tank for that building, the sewer cover so that the drainage for it. Is right under the driveway and it is almost diagonally across from the building on the, to the left of the walkway. And it could potentially be under the walkway that goes over to the town garage.
Yeah.
So you guys considered that when you're, when you're going for funding, that that may be an issue?
Yeah, so if I can speak to that a little bit, so we have some plans, right now the biggest, trying to think the best way to answer this. For this particular grant, any requests over fifty thousand dollars requires a preliminary phase called a Q P P, a qualified preservation plan. And those cost a significant amount of money to put together in advance and to include in these reports. So that already limits us to fifty thousand dollars or less in requesting for grants. Um, we have to be able to match it as well, so if we put forward a grant for twenty five thousand, we also in turn have to be able to fund twenty five thousand. The primary, to kind of circle back to that Sherry, the primary focus right now is to get the building, the of the lead situation, get the exterior done, this is gonna be a multi-year project. We're probably looking at somewhere between three to five years before completion, I think is what we've estimated between the turnaround time, the access to the building itself. The funds from the town not hitting until December of twenty twenty five, uh, just the tax cycle. So for us to be able to move forward and be eligible to match some of these grants, we have to kind of be strategic in our placement. And we also only have a few months to be able to navigate having a contractor come in with the school over the summer. Um, so, so yes, at some juncture in time, probably once we move to the interior, it's gonna be exterior, interior. And then our ultimate goal is to be able to bring enrichment programs into the community and there'll also be some consideration for that in doing the interior as well. Um, some of our preliminary discussions have actually used that bump out on the back and we would like to make an A D A compliant restroom for the public. Um, we've talked about possibly having a very small kitchenette available, if somebody wanted to make coffee for guests or microwave for popcorn. Um, and then being able to modify the backside of the structure to accommodate a handicap accessible ramp. An A D A compliant ramp is really our goal, so we may end up removing a window uh or two to do that on the back, so. Um, so all of that will probably be part of a secondary phase at a later point. So. Um, an L chip, worth mentioning, L chip, I believe, um, once we secure funds, they will assess the applicants over the summer. I believe October is their anticipated response time and funding does not hit until the following year, so this all lines up. Pretty well for our timeline to be able to to launch. So.
Questions? Other questions, I should say.
I spent a lot of time in the app, guys, I'm happy to answer them. It's nice to not look at a screen.
Do we need to, and I guess this is a question for Jim, do we need to give authorization or who would legally be allowed to sign this, you as a board chair? I think I I would sign it as a board chair with the, with a motion from the board.
Is there any, as far as this chip grant goes, cause we don't have a meeting for another couple of weeks, is there authorization we would need to give to Jim? In terms of signing something else that could possibly come up between now and our next meeting?
Um, I I'm comfortable, if if that's an option, it would.
Well, I I just don't know, I'm just throwing it out there as a general discussion, I guess.
Yeah, cause they have timelines that they have to.
Right, right.
So we could just give him.
Could give him the authorization that he could sign documents as needed to help their grant.
That would be superb.
It's just to get the grant money, right?
Yeah, right.
I hope.
As long as you're not signing to tear it down.
Oh, no, we're gonna fix it.
All right, fine, I'm not signing now.
Um, I did comb through the app, there's a whole bunch of other downloads that you can do to kind of get a precursory glance at what is necessary. Um, these, these four items that I've presented to you guys are really the items I think that are most, that are, do need to come from the school board, but if I do find any others and. This is, and I have permission to.
So I I guess I'll make a, I'm I'm all for, you know, you guys are doing great work, trust me, I can tell you've read that way more than I would want to read. Um, I just, I'll make a motion to authorize Jim to sign as needed, as well as the the memorandum of understanding, as long as.
Yeah. Of the application as well. Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed, one abstaining, I'm gonna abstain because I'm the one being told to sign it.
Right.
So I will abstain from that. So I will abstain from that, just.
Okay.
Sounds good.
That's all I have for you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate this opportunity.
And I, I jumped her up because I, we've been texting back, and we're just like, what time? I'm like, 7:30. She has kids in baseball.
My kids are roaming the town at large.
I know. I heard the, I heard the police cruiser go by, and I go.
It's probably them.
They were driving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thought I heard dirt bikes going.
No, hard car's getting rebuilt on that out here.
All right. Benchmark data.
Yes.
Will be hand-carried to the meeting.
Yes.
He's got them in hand.
Yes, as promised. So, um, looking at STAR data is not like riding a bike. As I used to do this all the time as a curriculum director, I spent a lot of time looking this over today and then talked to Heather, and she said I found a way better report. So we're going to provide that to you at some point. But in the interim, we've got some STAR math and STAR.
Just remember that the camera's right at your back.
Oh, perfect. That's my best side, in the back of my head. There we go. And what you're seeing here is STAR math, STAR reading, benchmarking, that is delivered in the fall, winter, and spring. And what you have here is some cohort data that shows some student progress. When I sit down, I can talk to you a little bit more about this, but if you want to get started. Heather, as mentioned, we're going to, we're going to pull a student growth report for you as well to show you where our students started and where they're going. But this is going to show you how they've progressed over time. I think that the board has shown some interest, which is outstanding, in looking at student achievement. And I think having this as a standing, you know, every other meeting item is really good to talk about, because this is what, you know, we do in schools. We educate our students, and there's a lot of other things that we talk about. And I think talking more about academics is really important to keep front and center. So, a couple of things I'll point out. Again, you're looking at reading and math, the enterprise assessment. What you'll see here is how our students performed over time. As they, obviously, the longer they've been in the school, the more information it will have, divided into four categories, below, at the intervention level, on watch, and at benchmark. One of the things that I think we, we should be talking about at some point is looking at the way that the areas of distinction are laid out. This is, we have the ability to change some of those based, more aligned with the state assessment. That's something that I think Heather and I will have a conversation about at some point. Because if you look at the percentile ranking, it's not super even. And I think if we're looking at wanting to have more transferable data, that how students will perform in the state assessment, we're going to want to align those more to the state assessment rather than just at the STAR per- percentiles. Because 40th percentile is not really where I want to see, you know, our, our students that are, are green level kids. I think we can make that more meaningful. So, something that I've done in different districts, and I think something that we can talk about in the future, I certainly, you know, Heather and I have talked a little bit about this, dipping our toes into the water, and don't want to upset the apple cart and make sure that's rolled out correctly, because I certainly don't want to show that, why is this all this regression when we're, we're changing the scale? So there's a lot of things that need to be taken into account. But this is kind of just some broad level, 30,000-foot view of how our students have done over time. And again, I think we'll show you some student growth reports in the fall, so I can show you where our students have achieved, based on where they're coming in and where they, where they, where they are. This is going to show you where they've done, meeting those, those cut scores. And I think Deb mentioned this last time as well, where are these students coming into us at, and how much have they gained? Because I think it's important to show that information that, hey, if a student's still not on grade level, but they progressed, you know, a grade level and a half, that's really important, rather than somebody who's just come in on grade level and hasn't really progressed much. So there's, there's a lot to unpack here, a lot to look at. So that's my.
So, first thing that comes, that I see. So, reading to math, the number of students difference in some.
Yep.
Is that just because of the day we took the testing, or?
Uh, are you looking at a specific year, Jim?
Well, I'm, if you just... So like, let's say first grade, 14 on the reading and 18 on the math.
They may not have, they may have been in that early.
So some kids at that grade level don't pass the early literacy test to get into the regular reading. So there's an early literacy test first, and you have to kind of graduate out of that to take the reading. So when you're talking first grade, not all the kids make it out of that.
So this.
You find their data in an early literacy.
Yeah. So same assessment, but it's broken into the enterprise assessment, and then to Heather's point, the early literacy. And if you don't meet that criteria, you're not going to be able to take the enterprise test. It won't let you.
So that's why in second grade, it's the same, but then second, first grade, below it, their first grade grades is fair.
That's, that's right.
So why wouldn't they make it into, i- is it because they're not?
It's just their skills.
Yeah, it's an adaptive.
They're not there yet.
Yeah.
They, when they're taking the STAR test for reading or for math, they have to pass the pre-test in order to get into the test.
And this is an adaptive assessment, so it's going to move you where you are ability-wise, so it'll change, it'll change some of the questions. If you're on, if you're, if it's asking you, if you're in second grade and it's giving you some questions that are at the second grade level, and you, you know, I'm taking it and I get it wrong, 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 it's going to bump me down until it finds that right spot for me and can tell me exactly where I'm at and what standards I need to, to work on and to hit. So it's not a standardized assessment that we think of like an SAT or a state assessment level, where everybody's getting the same questions.
So, so when our students in third grade take a state assessment, they're taking, every student's taking that same assessment.
That's right.
Whereas those students in third grade might take math, one student's up fourth, fifth grade, and it adjusts as they go, and then down? Or not?
Well, when you're saying state assessment, the New Hampshire SAS is computer adaptive. So I just want to clarify, I don't know what you're referring to for na- for state assessment, because the New Hampshire SAS is computer adaptive and does do that the same that STAR does. Is that with kids? Yes, it does.
It, it will, there's.
I know they get different questions.
They get different questions, but I, it's, it's.
It does. It, that's the, that was the whole selling point when they came out with that, because it's competency-based. It's computer adaptive.
We'll get you some more information on that, but it's, it's not, it's not a, an adaptive assessment.
Okay.
Adaptive assessment, this is going to move grade levels on you. It's not going to, the state assessment's not going to bump you down to grade level or, or to grade levels. It's, it's, it's asking you the grade level, grade level questions.
And for some assessments, like the writing assessment, they get one question. It's a big, huge writing piece, so that's not adaptive.
Right.
At all, so.
Some more information to come.
Yeah.
So, sorry, so just one more. So this, this, you take a third grade math, Steve takes his tests, and Steve gets his thing back and it says Steve's now in the fifth grade math, right? What does it say? He got 70, he's at 40% based on his third grade?
It's going, yeah, yeah. So it'll, it'll give you the grade level equivalency.
Okay.
Um, which it'll tell you, like, this student's at a, Steve's at a 5.4, so, you know, grade five, on his way to sixth grade. And then it's going to tell you how the student performed against his peers nationwide, and that's where the actual percentile score comes in. So it'll give you, it'll give you kind of the best, both, best of both worlds.
So when we, when our students, Steve, this third grader, takes his state testing, which is where we get the true New Hampshire numbers, that's the same sort of feedback, just at a state level?
At the state level, that's correct. And Heather and I have a different understanding of the, the way the test is calculated.
And if we don't, this used to be a thing, if we didn't take, if student didn't take a test, it counted as a zero. Is that still a thing?
Uh, if you hit below, you're allowed 10.
Is it five or 10%?
I think it's 10%.
So if we go below 90% of the students taking it, do you start taking a hit on our number?
Everybody else is zero.
Yes. So the zeros count against.
And I have to say, Heather does a really good job as far as explaining the merits of the test, why it's important. So our, our students that opt out, it's very low.
Right. I just, if that's the only thing that the taxpayers see, is we got a 75 or a 40 on the test.
It was high. The number was high for, for quite.
Right.
Some years.
This year, we only have one exemption, and it's a, it's a logical exemption.
Yeah, no, I just want to be fair.
There's the alt assessment as well. So if you have students that are not able to take the state test, there's an alternative for those students to
Yeah.
be assessed also, but just it's a different format.
True. And you have to qualify for that.
Would that qualification be through, like, special?
Special ed, exactly. Yep.
Other questions?
I want to comment, if you want.
I don't think there is one.
Yeah, there is. Yep. I, I was asked last time to add 15, the beginning of 15 at the end. So we did move that. Yes. All right. So moving past there, and then we'll go to, what's next? SAU 9 calendar?
Yeah, this was asked to be put on the agenda. You'll see the SAU 9 calendar on page 41, I believe, that rolls out the calendar. We're pretty much aligned to it, with the exception of the early release days that I know have sparked some reaction. I know I spoke with Superintendent Frichette. She's rolled this out. I don't know if it's, it's, I know it's been rolled out to all the buildings, whether that's been dispersed, I'm not sure, but we're trying to do a really good job. And our, our community is explaining this, because we have students that, obviously, from each of our districts that attend, so.
And cost implications for transportation?
We have 15 extra days of busing.
Yep.
And I have, there's another inconsistency too. We're taking the entire two weeks for Christmas and they're not.
That's right.
So what about our students 22nd, 23rd? Because we're not providing, are we providing transportation for the high school?
We will. We will provide transportation. We did look at, we did look at the way that our calendars, basically, it was, it was, the way we extend it out in June, we get those two days back that align with transportation, because if we didn't, based on our hours, we wouldn't be sending kids to school. So we either had, make up for it in June with transportation, or in, we pay for it in June, or we pay for it in December, I think is the better way to say it.
Yeah, 17 days that are different.
Right.
With the PLCs.
Right, right. So we're, we're, we're going to get, yeah, there's going to be some added costs with busing, we know that. But I know there wanted to be some discussion about this and talk about that.
I can say as a parent of a high schooler, I still have not heard anything communicated to me about this. So I think it would be good to make sure that there's some communication that we're sending, like, we have these brand-new sixth graders getting ready to go to the middle school, like, to not have them surprised come, you know, August.
Well, and families who kind of rely on their high school students to watch maybe their elementary school students, when the elementary school kids aren't in school, and now the high schoolers are going to be in school.
I, I was more concerned about the PLC days, just as, as a parent of that early dismissal. You know, because some parents, especially of middle schoolers, may not be comfortable with their kid being home alone. Not everybody is at that age, so. I just feel like there's, should be some communication to families consistently.
Well, I can't see why we can't, why we can't put that out there, why we can't send this out in our next week's newsletter, just to give them next year's Conway's schedule. There are some things that do not align with ours.
We didn't get our newsletter done today. We can send it tomorrow.
Perfect. Sounds good to me, if anybody's.
Yeah, and I would, I would also note the last two days at the end of the year, too, are different.
So we could send this one and our SAU 13 one with the newsletter tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay.
And just, just letting parents know that there are some inconsistencies in the schedules, to please be aware that, that they are there.
And I'll full disclosure, I'm an employee of SAU 9, so I know some things, but I don't feel it's appropriate for me to comment here.
Thank you. I, I.
I'm not an official, so.
And I can add, I know, reading the, the letter being sent out, I know they're working with childcare, and there's some, some pieces there, thank, even though you didn't say it, Deb, thank you, that prompted me to remember that. So I'll say it, that I know that they're working, they're, they're trying to be.
Up school-type programs.
It just, it's unfortunate, because there's already, school's five days a week, and there's already so many days that the kids get off, and then leaving early, you almost lose a day with that early release, you know?
And it, it's true. I mean, I, it, it, as a former curriculum director, I would love this. I would love the opportunity to work with my teachers and work with my staff. I think it's, that's what they're trying to accomplish, but right, it's, it's hard for the kids.
I want to say something. I, I, it, it's apples to oranges, I think. I think people don't understand how many days out of the classroom teachers are in training. And so you're talking about you're having students with a substitute for what you, you guys are looking at as early release days. So there's not always a negative side to it. There is a positive side too, where you're now making sure that the time that students are in school, they're face-to-face time with teachers, not with substitutes. And so that training can happen.
So the training's happening with all the staff together as well, not everyone.
Yeah, and I'm sure you guys know from this district, getting substitutes when you want to have
Five teachers out one day.
A grade level out is, is a nightmare, so. Those are just.
Oh, I understand the logistics of it as well.
Those are just some of the things that are taken into consideration, that I, I get that it's a total inconvenience, and, but just, there are some positive things too.
Lakes Region MOU?
Yeah, so the Lakes Region MOU is in your packet. We've talked about this at the joint board meetings. Maybe this is on page 41. It's hard to.
Yeah. The other was just on 40.
Yeah, hey, I'm only off by one. That sounds about right for me, huh? So, uh, this is the MOU that the Lakes Region Group has put together, Lakes Region superintendents. There is some state funding and federal funding available. There is no financial cost to us, but basically letting the Lakes Region school districts know that we'd be interested in forming some sort of consortium, or, and this is actually just the investigation stage for shared services such as speech, OT, PT, possible out-of-district student placement. So we have other options. Trying to, basically, what we've always tried to do here is try to bring things in-house and just work with a larger house rather than the house we have. So we're not alone with all these issues we're facing. It's across the state, it's across Lakes Region, North Country. So this MOU is just authorizing that we're interested in being part of that investigation stage, and I think this is helpful for the Lakes Region Group when it comes to trying to secure funding from our legislators, that, hey, this, this is a need, and these people, you know, these, these school districts are, are acknowledging that and interested. There is a high school, separate MOU. This is only K-38. There's a separate high school piece. I can bring that to the board as well. I know it's a little, it might be a little tricky to navigate, being that we send our students to
Other high schools.
Other high schools, so I actually brought the K-814 for now, and we can, we can talk about the high school one, if that's something the board wants to see back here.
Okay. Questions? I know we talked about it a little bit at the student board meeting. So I will accept a motion to approve the memorandum, memorandum of agreement between the participating, between the Madison school districts and the Lakes Region consortium.
I have one, I just, sorry. I just have one question.
Let me get a second on the floor, then we'll talk.
I'll take a sec.
Second, there we go. Now discussion. Deb and then Jeremy, yes.
So this is in effect for one year? Is that from?
For the, yes.
From the date that we just?
July 1. I mean, this year has been trying to secure folks, but this is just for that investigation that we're, you know, if we need to send Lisa to, you know, investigate, or myself to, you know, be part of a committee, the, the board's saying this is important work and, you know.
Wait a minute, that costs me money.
Well, yeah, yeah. It'll be over Zoom. It'll be over Zoom, on my own time, Jim. There we go. On a Saturday.
Rather do it on Sunday.
All right. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Can I just say one?
Yeah.
I wouldn't throw out the idea of incorporating.
I wouldn't throw out the idea of incorporating high school because we do potentially have out-of-district placements that are still dictated by us, so I wouldn't limit.
I think that's a different agreement.
Yes, it is. No, I know, but I'm just saying scope.
You want me to bring that back?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'll do that.
I don't think it's gonna be much of an add, but we do have students that go out of district that.
And we still deal with special education for our students.
I'll bring it here, I appreciate that.
Okay, so again, all in favor? Aye, anyone opposed or abstaining, none, and then we'll bring us back the, um, the.
If you have the high school one as well.
Yep.
Or, uh, I should say high school to twenty-two.
Yeah. Oh, right, because we're on the hook for special until the age of twenty-two. Perfect. Legislative update?
Yeah, quick legislative update, um, I sent all my administrators a couple bills that went into, that were signed into office, one is, um, transportation, so there's a bill that just went into place that, um, any school employee cannot transport a student without parent consent for, um, any type of hospitalization, mental health, I mean, we don't do that anyways, but, um, in some rare circumstance, you know, we can't transport any student without parent consent, and that's been outlawed in, uh, just signed at Governor Ayotte's desk, um, specific to, um, hospitalization, um, specifically, so, um, that's a law that just went into effect, dual enrollment, um, how many credits you can take under dual enrollment is another law that just went into effect, uh, we're tracking, uh, the parent bill of rights, um, uh, bill that's currently in the House, we're looking at, um, there's a definition for, uh, part-time teachers that's being, uh, amended in the House currently, there's another bill, and I'm just pulling out a few pertinent ones that I, that I am looking and tracking with, along with Heather Sherwood. Um, one is about bullying and cyberbullying across multiple school districts, not just your own, uh, so there's gonna be some changes to that potentially, and, uh, there's one that is relative to the, uh, issuance of a no trespass order on municipal or school district property, so that bill right now is out there that, um, would restrict the ability, um, to issue a no trespass order. Uh, none of these have hit the governor's desk yet, but, um, those are a few that we're specifically interested in, and obviously the bill that is, um, open enrollment, so that is still, uh, in committee and that has some implications for a variety of reasons about students having the ability to essentially enroll in any district that would, uh, opt to be an open enrollment school district. Uh, that's significant, uh, educationally and financially, uh, effects.
And that one just scares me, just to, to not know where we might get a bill from.
Right.
Any plan, any plan?
That's, it makes it really hard, I mean, you know, a, a state that does the whole school districts as one, it's, it's easier to happen, but, you know, how do we as a small district say, yeah, we have twenty-eight or eighteen seniors?
Right.
Um, I've got them in fourteen different schools.
Yeah.
You know, and, and good luck to the, uh, administrative office to figure out how to pay all those.
Eighty percent of the, uh, cost per pupil is what I've seen as a potential, um.
Okay, so there would be a number, but, but that varies based on where you are. You know, if they decide to go to Manchester, it's gonna be a lot less than if they decide to go to Colebrook.
Right.
Okay.
Uh, I have a question on that first one that you were talking about with transporting for like mental health.
Yes.
Does that mean we, like, can't call nine-one-one for transporting, or is that the school transporting?
We couldn't have the social worker or the school counselor or any transport with, or, uh, administrator, anybody without.
I think calling nine-one-one would be the only option.
Yes, correct, that's right.
Um, did the cellphone use still pass?
I believe that's, that is still in committee. Did you hear different?
I was trying to find the list of what went to Governor Ayotte's list, cause two I was watching did.
Yeah, that may be, that may have been moved to her desk, I, sounded like she was, if she, she made it clear, if it came to her desk, she was going to sign.
Right, that's what I heard, I just, I mean, I know that, I think Kenneth actually went to that this past year.
Yeah.
Um, and I don't know if they had, I never heard of much kickback on it, but, uh.
It's in his report every, it's out there, still working on it.
Working out the.
It was interesting, they had the, um, the police officer from Coral Springs that was involved in the Parkland for that training.
Yeah.
For the whole district, and he, he actually recommended letting students have cell phones, so there was a.
For that purpose.
Interesting.
Well, he was just talking about the logistics of when you have to reunite and they, a lot of the kids had to leave their backpacks behind, and so parents were coming up saying, m- my kid's phone says they're here. And it's cause they had to leave their backpacks, so it's, it's kinda interesting that there's like not an agreement.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, the, the school out, like, SAU nine is doing it for different reasons, for sure, but.
And I think they're all doing it, you know, and I think it's, in, in some way it's good, it, it makes you have more face-to-face conversations.
Totally.
And that's, the, the law has been interpreted, you know, is often a way going to be within the spirit of the law, or is it that you have to put your phone in a, you know, secure.
Faraday gauge.
Right, so I mean, whether policies meet that definitely, there, there's still a lot of questions about it.
Just seems like a policing nightmare.
Yeah. We're gonna caught up to the technology.
Right, okay, um, anything else?
I think that's it for me.
Public comment?
We did that on purpose.
Building and grounds updates, eh, raise your hand if you need it, uh, building and grounds update. So gym floor?
Gym floor, we still don't have the final cost, we don't have a cost on the logo.
No, but pickleball was included.
Pickleball lines, two pickleball courts were included, they go the opposite way of basketball, is that what you said?
They're not included.
Basketball goes that way?
They're not included.
I didn't think they were included.
I thought I, yeah, I thought.
They, uh, it was an Andre's quote, I went back through and read it, I was bound to quote.
The last email we had with him wasn't in there, we hadn't gotten the new quote, the last thing I saw. I've heard. Last email.
I, I had a phone call with Andre asking him those questions, um, and yes, it was included because when we did our walk-around with him, at that time the board hadn't, you hadn't talked about it, whether or not, so he did include it in his, but the mascot was not, so it may be give up one for the other, I don't know.
I haven't seen an updated quote personally.
So pickleball still to be determined, sounds like it's in there, but it didn't appear to be in the.
But the, the logo, what's the, is the logo?
That was, Heather was saying that, that wasn't included.
That was not included.
All right, so that's the disclaimer.
But the, the striping, right.
I'd rather have the mask.
So.
I was talking with the rec director today about the pickleball lines and thinking of, and, and I know nothing about pickleball whatsoever, I don't even know what it looks like, but, and thinking about the younger kids and would it be confusing for them with basketball lines, but then add in the pickleball lines, will that? I, I have no idea, so it was just a, kind of a conversation we were talking about, like, will that be more challenging for them?
Smiling.
Yes, that would be very confusing for them.
I, I don't even know what they look like, so I.
They get confused about the regular lines.
And it sounds like pickleball is an option in Tamworth and in Freedom, as well as North Conway, and then once summer hits, other places, so maybe that's a consideration to have it.
I haven't seen an updated quote from the email string that you and I were on, right?
I, I don't think I saw it, no.
Okay.
I think regardless though, they may as well learn, because when they're going to other schools to play, like.
Yeah, I guess my concern is, are, how much are the kids gonna use the pickleball court?
Right.
Eh, versus the basketball court, and if we can only get one of the two things.
Right, obviously basketball will be number one.
Or even like the emblem in the middle versus the pickleball, I think we have to have a discussion about that.
Yeah.
I was talking to Andre again, I wanna touch to him anyways, but he did, in response to an email from Heather, it said, that's great news, our pricing includes the basketball court lines plus two picklebo- pickleball court lines, and he's gonna inquire about the cost of the center lo- center court logo, and, um, Heather shared with them the Madison Mustang logo, and then the cost of the extended warranty, so those are the two cost items we're waiting on.
I was just wondering if maybe they had pictures of a floor that they've done that has both, that we could just see.
I think that Rec Center they did in.
Meredith.
Meredith has it.
Cause that's where he plays.
Uh, uh, they play pickleball.
Just so when we're trying to decide when, like.
Right.
I would rather do everything that we want to do.
One shot, get it done, done right.
So if pickleball courts are important.
To people.
Yeah, and I, obviously the emblem would be important, I would think too, but.
The branding.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna be there for a long, long time, so.
Yeah, the emblem would be nice. It would look really nice, I mean, the rec already owns like all of the throw-down for the pickleball, so it's not like, it, yeah, we don't need lines, I mean, it is, it's a up-and-coming and big thing in surrounding towns, but we have the staff.
Will it be in twenty years though?
No, it'll be a new game.
Yeah.
You don't know of yet.
It'll be ping pong.
I don't know if you can see, but that's a whole lot of lines.
With a softball.
So if you've been in any of those buildings and had like all those.
If we weren't all in the fifties.
Oh, like you can't see because you're old.
That is exactly what I was saying.
That's a lot.
It is a lot of lines. And I just wonder, is, as rec, thinking in the future at all about doing some outdoor courts like there are in, and I know that doesn't solve the problem of winter.
Right after we do the garage, right?
Or the building.
So this would be a great time to say that there is a master plan committee that meets, um, the first Monday of every month, and anybody can go to those meetings, and these are conversations where they're talking about the property in Madison and how it could be used, so feel free as community members to attend.
So.
I think it starts at Wednesday, first Wednes- oh, sorry, first Wednesday of every month, five-thirty to six-thirty? I can say it, cause Asia and I are both on that committee.
In order to speak, you need to be in front of the camera? No, no, I'm not doing that.
Not in my jurisdiction.
Um, so I, I would tend to say that where we're, we're teaching basketball, um, and if the extra lines are, become confusion, could be, but I'm not opposed to having lines there as long as it's not.
When do we have to decide all this stuff?
Before they install it.
Which I'm thinking is over the summer, right?
Right, well, I mean, I think we're still targeting July twentieth for our start date, so.
So we need to get back from Andre?
Hopefully by our.
Public hearing?
Public hearing night.
So we are getting a few things on the.
Yes, we are, thi- thi- this always happens when we decide that we gotta add to it, so. But if we can limit it to buildings and grounds, that would be great.
Yep.
Thank you. All right, um, water heater?
Water heater, it's not gushing, so that's good news, um, I think Jeremy said he did a little look at that type of water heater, and they are fairly expensive, um, I can do a bit more looking, um, but I think I will jump to the water filtration for a minute and then go back to the water heater.
Sure.
So we had our meeting on Monday, and then Thursday I got an email from the state, from the same person that said, oh, no, we didn't have to, you know, go get multiple bids, and it turns out he was informed that we, they are now required to have two bids, or two or more bids, um, and then said with the disclaimer that we know that not everybody responds, so keep track of who you reach out to. So once you start that process, I had to advertise it, that it would be federally funded, and I had to rewrite the RFP to include the federal clauses, um, I sent it out, I put it in the paper, and I reached out to five well companies, and Guilford and Capital Well did respond to me, and Capital came out to look, I do not have a new price from them as yet, um, I was hoping to have it this afternoon, um. At this point though, we've done everything we need to now to satisfy the requirements for the Davis Bacon Act and all of the other federal procurement, so we can go ahead with our original approval for Guilford Well. My only caveat is that with the Davis Bacon Clause, one thing they will have to do is provide us with a certified payroll. It seems silly because the project's a day to it the most at what he was estimating, but that will still need to happen, um, it's an additional cost, how much, I don't know, I can't imagine, it's more than a couple hundred dollars.
So would you prefer to have a motion tonight to, to press for Guilford Well contract?
Yes, because we're out of compliance.
Right.
Um, we had like maybe six months from the time that we tested to get our remediation in place, and so we're, we're past that.
Okay.
So we need to get the remediation in place as soon as possible so that we can do our next round of testing.
And then they did want us to hold off replacing any fixtures until we adjust the water at the source, which then.
Why pump bad water into existing water heater?
And why pump bad water into a new water heater, so.
But, but they want us to do the new fixtures, like I'm not testing, I'm not testing until we've done the water treatment and the new fixtures, because that's what they asked for.
Right.
So, but we also don't want to miss out on that, it's all, we're being told it's all grant-funded, so we need to pay for this and then file for reimbursement, so there's like this timeline piece that is very quickly falling out from under us.
Okay, so a motion to approve the Guilford Well contract as previously said to us, second, so Ed and Jeremy, um, any other discussion there? Thank you for checking with them to make sure and finding out that we needed to back this down a little bit, but it's good to done, all in favor? Aye, anyone opposed or abstaining, carries, all right. So hot water heater will just table until after the filtration system's done?
There is a water heater on the CIP, whether it's that one, I don't know if there's another one in this building, so I was gonna look at that, but my recommendation is that if it's not, it should be, and that we replace it out of the CIP.
And we can do that, moving.
And Ken has been monitoring it and it hasn't been leaking recently, so, Ken has been monitoring it and it hasn't been leaking recently, so.
That's good.
All right, anything else for building and grounds? Moving on. New business policies for discussion, building and ground security, use of building. So these two were, I added on here just with all the discussion with the Madison Schoolhouse, use of the building and all that, um, I, I think if it was back to the committee to look at, if there are any suggestions of things to add or delete from there, um, to make us more compliant with where we wanna be, that would be beneficial in terms of we hash it out here, uh, but if there is things that people would like to see in there, um, definitely get added into that, thoughts? So let's do that, push that back to the committee, you guys meet in the fall.
Well, at this point, we'll meet in the fall.
Let's see those come back, uh, public comment on school property, K F. Is that related to the as well?
Yes, they're all related, visitors to school.
Public conduct, not.
Conduct, okay.
Conduct.
I was wondering why it said what it said, but I.
Well, it, it's definitely wrong on your agenda, so.
Well, that, that's what's on the agenda, it says public comments, and that's why I was like, wait.
Well, yeah, you, you do, uh, B E D H, actually, public comment, just for the board here.
So.
Right.
Is that, because you said something about legislation with the no trespassing, is that, could that possibly have an effect on our K F A policy?
So, not at the moment, but if it does, so once, once the, uh, bills go to the governor's desk, New Hampshire School Board Association will issue any policy, so it'll be, typically, uh, we do a lot of our work in the fall.
Yep.
But thank you, Deb, good question.
Um, the only thing I saw, I don't know if we're doing them all, was on the B E D H, there's section three.
Oh, that's gonna be a first reading, yeah.
There's two minutes in there on section three. Says the board will provide a minimum of thirty minutes, minutes to hear public comment.
Yeah.
And then I didn't know if, says may, the same section, says may include additional public comment periods for specific agenda items with a time limit for public comments specified on the pertinent agenda item? For public comments specified on the pertinent agenda item?
So I think that would be, let's say we were discussing. Uh, the Madison Corner Schoolhouse as directly.
Right.
Maybe have public comments just related to that.
Yeah, do we want it to say pertinent agenda items instead of the whole agenda? Cause it just says a pertinent agenda at the end of that section three.
I can change it to say items. Sure.
I didn't know.
What reference to specific agendas?
Items. Items.
Item or items.
Item or item.
Yeah.
So only one minute, not minutes, minutes.
Yeah.
Kathy didn't read this verse.
No, definitely not. I would warn.
I read them all painfully last night at ten o'clock. Um, I also, at the end of it.
Yep.
Very end.
It's bedtime, sorry.
Um, that one's not as much, but at the very end where it says interruptions may result in a recess. Or provided the thirty minutes of public comment has expired, I think it's supposed to be an adjournment of the meeting.
Whereabouts are you?
At the very last line.
Or instead of and.
Right above the New Hampshire case law.
It's the very end before the case law. That whole sentence, I just.
It's not, it's too many commas in there.
Too many commas and an or and an and and a, it's very confusing. Put that in chat G P T and tell it to make it right.
Doesn't read well.
No, no, it does not.
All right, let's, let's send it back for.
You got it. That whole sentence.
Right.
I don't know what it means.
I will draw that up.
It's sent out to Kathy.
Yes.
She will wordsmith that thing.
We'll have that fixed in no time.
Legalese it up before we do a first reading. Thank you.
Uh, do you want to?
We can do a first reading and then have legalese for the second reading.
Love it.
Just do me a favor and just put highlight, strike through so that we know what came out and what went in.
Sure.
Yeah, I'd really appreciate it. So I will accept that a motion to approve B E D H as a first reading with corrections.
To be made.
By Jeremy, second by Ed. Any other discussion there? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye, any opposed or abstaining? Okay. And now we have J L C G R. I'm going to read it off the sheet rather than off my. Um, exclusion of students from school for illness.
Yes, so this policy was brought forth. I called the policy committee remotely. Uh, the school nurses met as a recommendation, they'd like to change the um, uh, text from the, the red book. Which is used. I didn't know that was the, uh, the name of the handbook they used prior, but now the preferred handbook is Department of Health and Human Services Disease Handbook for Children Providers. So essentially it's just changing what resource they use um, to determine.
And this has been reviewed and approved by the three school nurses?
Three nurses.
What I like to hear.
Unbelievable.
It actually came from them.
Oh, that's even better. I will take a motion to approve J L C G dash R. Motion by Deb, second by Jeremy. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye, any opposed or abstaining? I did have B mold in there that we skipped over, but just wanted to jump back to any, no, that's all right. Any room? It's kind of hidden in there like mold is. Um, I think this was on, this carried over from last month about discussion about the Madison Corner Schoolhouse, but we decided.
It's in the basement, right?
Right.
Yes.
Decided to dig in and do it then as part of the project.
Part of the cleanup.
Yeah.
It's not being used anyways.
Right. Um, so D N H R S board resolution?
Yes, this is just housekeeping. The board ratified the CBA in January and the union ratified it approved by the voters. But now for the pairs to actually for the SAU to pay in retirement for the pairs, we have to have a resolution that says, um. The board has voted and that will approve the inclusion of its employees in the New Hampshire Retirement System of the State of New Hampshire. Effective July one, twenty twenty five, the start of the new CBA. It needs to be signed and witnessed.
Okay.
And I have to have the count of the um, guesses and nos.
So I will take a motion to approve the resolution, which is weird that we have to do this, but that's okay. So motion to approve the resolution, which can you just read it again for me, Heather, please?
The resolution?
Yes.
Is that be it resolved that the Madison School District will elect to approve of the inclusion of its employees. So not teachers, but the employees in the New Hampshire Retirement System of the State of New Hampshire who meet the eligibility requirements under RSA one hundred dash eight colon twenty. Roman numeral one dash A and I'll keep going, blah, 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 to be effective July one, twenty twenty five.
Okay. So I'll take a motion to approve. Motion by Deb, second by Sherry. Any other discussion? And my, my only thoughts and concerns here is, is an abstention. But it's not, I'm, I'm still going to do that anyways. Um, so.
I mean, this is something that was voted upon and passed as part of the agreement.
Right.
We have to do it.
Right. Well, I, I, I agree with that and I'm just trying to, to stay within the spirit of. If it was broken out more to different subsets, it'd be easier to, but this is, says staff as a whole.
Is this just to add the, the pairs to it? It's not.
Employees, right?
It just says employees though.
It, it's employees. Um, but if we had a part-time employee that met the thirty hour, then it would include them also. We just don't have any.
All right.
I mean, it's, it's just pairs by default. It's not.
Right. It's not, it's not any specific, it's.
So is this an updated resolution? So we would normally have this anyway, but just for hourly staff, I mean, for salary.
This isn't my form. This is N H R S. It's a participating school district election, which Madison is a participating district. Prepare professional or support staff to become N H R S members.
Okay. So it is specific to that.
Specific to that. So then I think we're okay. So then I will call this to all in favor. Aye.
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 So three and opposed, zero and abstaining, two. An abstention because my wife is carried under that paraprofessional category. And at the same. Perfect. Yes, I, I, I wanted to try to find because then we ran into even more problems if we had two.
No, I think that was, that was good.
Sometimes talking about, all right, uh, old business Madison Corner Schoolhouse, we've done that already. Any board comments?
I just make a general comment. Thank you for the student data. I think that's the first since I've been on the board where we've gotten some real factual data.
Oh, great.
That the taxpayers can say, okay, here's progress for the students, even though it's not. Based on whatever, right? This is what we do to evaluate our students. I think that's important. Cause I think we do a great job of taking care of the building and the teachers and the staff. But I'd like to, and I don't know how to do this because I've never taught, but conceptually help the kids get further along. And I think we're doing that because our student, our cost of added district or cost of special ed are definitely down. So we're doing a great job of that. But the only, the only thing we can quantify it is with a test, which sucks personally.
But then bringing back student actual benchmarking to see the students' progress, maybe not the test itself, but the.
I think it's important for the board to have these conversations. Um, and I, um, I think it's important for the board to have these conversations. Um, we talk a lot when you think about the conversation, we had, you know, facilities, all these other things, but academics is the engine of that schools run.
Right.
And in an attempt to show some humility, which my wife would not believe. So good thing this is taped, that Heather is uh, correct that one third of the NHS.
Courtney, you logged on?
Yeah, yeah. One third of the assessment is adaptive. It will not move past two grade levels, but two, one third of the assessment is uh, adaptive.
Got it.
I'm still two thirds.
I'm going to pause you for a second.
I remember.
I, I know. That's why I stopped for a second.
So if, for, for the taxpayer, the voters out there on the, whatever, can you just summarize what the data tells us about our students here at Madison Elementary? We.
Sure. I, I, I will say, I will say that there'll be more, Deb. This was.
Sure.
Uh, uh.
Nan, sorry, Jesus. I was thinking it, Deb, because Deb, Deb requested this. Uh, so, um, there'll be, there'll be more of this, Nan. Um, this was some cohort information that, that shows our adaptive assessment. Um, it's a lot to unpack. I can certainly give you a copy that if you'd like to see, but we're going to have, we're going to talk more about it.
To be honest with you, I don't understand a lot of that.
Sure.
As a non educator, that's why I'm just saying, as long as we're going in the right direction, I think that's the message to the taxpayers and the voters, you know? We're seeing progress here and you know, maybe we're a little bit deficient in math, but this is what we're doing, you know, those kinds of things.
This is an attempt right now to look at, um, rather than just look at third grade, third grade, third grade, third grade, those kids change. Those kids depending on the class. I mean, I could be the teacher and have a class of third grade rock stars and I'd look like a great teacher. You know, that, that probably wouldn't be the case. Um, so this is an attempt to say, let's follow these kids. How are these kids doing when they, when they're in first grade, second grade, third grade? Where are they dipping? What do we need to do as a, as a school board, as administrators to support our students? Do we have the right programs in place? Do we have the right schedule in place? Uh, do we have the right interventions in place? Uh, and to have that healthy conversation. Um, and not, um, and not just have anecdotal or, or you know, just something else to go with. So, um, that's something for the board to look at. And it was basically a prompt for them to say, hey, Mike, I want to see more of this or more of that. Uh, so we can have some more detailed conversation. We got to keep it up here. Uh, obviously the classroom teachers and Heather have that more granular conversation about individual students. Um, but I think, um, getting some, our, our grade level equivalencies and, um, and showing that I'll be able to tell more of a, a bigger picture. And hopefully this won't be, it won't be hand carried next time. I had a, my, my second child was born a week and a half ago. So I, I, I have a small excuse. So thank you. I appreciate it, Nan. Thank you. So yes, we're going to keep that as part of the agenda.
I just think it's important to get the good stuff, you know, we're, we're going this way. Do you know what I mean?
I agree.
Because a lot of times you look up on those websites and you say, well, we were here.
Mm-hmm.
And now it is five years later and we're down here and we keep dropping. So.
Cost was up the.
You know, well, even status quo, but the effort is being put in and you know, it should just.
Thank you. Yeah, we're going to keep, we're going to keep at it. Um, and.
It starts with a nutritious breakfast.
Very nicely done, Jeremy.
That was smooth.
No, I've often said you should give every kid breakfast because if they start the day.
We'll be sure the budget committee approves that recommendation.
I felt very happy.
I was also going to say I'm looking forward to the report card that I know is being worked on, that that will encompass a lot more than just a score. Um, so that hopefully will help us get a better idea too.
Probably won't be ready and we were hoping for like, not for, but for the August board meeting. I'm out all of July for knee surgery. So it most likely will be at the September meeting so that we can spend.
That's something that will carry on, right?
Right. And then once we have that, then we can just update those numbers every year. So yeah, our first draft will hopefully be at the September board meeting.
Any other board comments? Motion, Jer?
Second.
Who, um.
Uh, Ed and Jeremy, of course.
Yes.
They, they, they beat Deb up. Don, Don was right on top of that.
All in favor?
You've lost your job.
Hi.